One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Garza, could you please call the roll?
Yes. Chairman Di Maria.
Here.
Vice Chairman Albrecht. Mrs. Kiefer.
Here.
Mr. O'Hanlon.
Here.
Mrs. Seber.
Here.
Mrs. Williams.
Here.
Mr. Morales.
Here.
Mr. Enderson.
Thank you. Dr. McGorick is not here tonight. She had, oh, she didn't have. Mr. McGorick had surgery today. Everything is fine. Just got a text. He has been released to his room, and she is with him tonight. So that's why we are missing our superintendent, and we have the very capable Dr. Saunders in her place. Are there any additions or deletions to the agenda?
Yes, we have two additions to the consent agenda. First is student services, student transfer request, and second is personnel, ratification of personnel.
Thank you. Superintendent's announcements and spotlights. Ms. Rattford?
If the two of you could join me down here, please. I appreciate it. Thank you, Chairman Di Maria. Thank you, Dr. Saunders, and to all of our board members, good evening to you. Good evening to everyone that joined us on tonight. I'm very excited to present some of our employees to you this evening for our spotlights, and our very first one is an exciting one. It's a state designation. I'm going to ask that Arnaz DeTavala from Osborn High School would come forward as I share this information about her. So, Arnaz, would you come forward? Over the last few years, Mrs. DeTavala has been invited to participate in curriculum review for the human services cluster by the Virginia Department of Education. She is also the cluster chair for the five statewide competitions in the human services cluster for Skills USA, where she coordinates the competition scope, judges, and prizes, and also manages the competition floor. From the time she has taken on this responsibility, there have been zero grievances filed against the human services cluster on competition day, which is major. Along with a few colleagues, she has also created a Northern Virginia group of cosmetology teachers who meet once a month to collaborate on cosmetology and human services programs. When the need for the cosmetology updates and professional development came up, and they needed a little boost, at the Virginia Association of Trade and Industrial Educators Conference, her name was submitted by a few of her colleagues from across the state. Last week, Ms. DeTavala received a call from Mr. Anthony Williams, the specialist for trade and industrial education and related clusters for VDOE, who enthusiastically gave her the title Lead Cosmetology Teacher for the State of Virginia. Her responsibilities will include coordinating updates and classes at the upcoming conference in Norfolk, and she is, will be a resource for Virginia's cosmetology teachers. So congratulations to you for this designation. Power. Very powerful. It's a very powerful thing when people across the state can look to people from our division, our staff, for their professionalism, so we certainly congratulate her on that designation. Tonight, we're very pleased to present our Apple and Pear Awards from across the division. As you know, the school board continues to recognize the outstanding contributions made by instructional and support employees through the Apple and Pear Award Program. The Apple Award is given to instructional or licensed personnel, and the Pear Award is given to support personnel. As I call your names, I ask that you would come and pick up your lovely gift, and then join Dr. Saunders and Mr. Di Maria here to my left. We will begin tonight, I know, walk the runway. That's right. We'll start tonight with Hayden Elementary School, Nicole Sandrewitz, grade three teacher. Ms. Sandrewitz thinks outside the box. She focuses on what works for the students in a student-centered manner. She supports students based on their strengths and needs and differentiates their work because she knows them so well. Her seating arrangements change constantly, and she has flexible seating everywhere you look. Some students work at a lowered desk and sit on the floor, while others are at a round table. Some are at a square table, and others are working on the rug with clipboards. Her classroom management style is student-friendly and fun. She gives them time to be creative and teaches them how to take responsibility for themselves, for their work, by self-charting their progress. She puts the learning in the hands of the students, and they certainly flourish. Congratulations to you. From Weems Elementary School, Heather James, reading coach. Ms. James's official title at Weems is, as I said, reading coach, but she's taken on much more responsibility to ensure that the high rigor and expectations of students and staff extend beyond reading. She's a strong support to all staff. Nothing is done lightly. Her thoughtful, intentional manner of handling situations causes people to have a deep appreciation of the care she applies to everything she does. She continues to support new staff members while still being a rock star reading coach. Congratulations, Ms. James. Next, we have from Baldwin Intermediate School, Amy Bissard, fifth-grade science teacher. Ms. Bissard consistently goes above and beyond to not only improve the education of her students, but to increase the level of performance of her colleagues. She always looks for ways to grow and to help those around her grow. She takes on many responsibilities herself that her, so her colleagues don't have to. She is selfless, compassionate, and a team player who is always looking at ways to improve the teaching and learning environment at her school. Congratulations. Thank you. Mayfield Intermediate School, Amber Duchess, school counselor. Amber Duchess continually works to build a positive community for the learners and staff at Mayfield Intermediate. Through her leadership on the Positive Behavioral Interventions and Supports, or PBIS, team, she has brought forth rewarding experiences for students. As she walks down the hallways at school, students excitedly call out her name, and she greets them with a smile and warm hello. She has built a connection with the students, and they know they have an adult that will support them when they need it and will celebrate the little things as well. With the staff, she is patient and encouraging. She listens and strives to help. She works behind the scenes to make Mayfield a positive learning and work environment. Thank you. And from Metz Middle School, we have Michelle Witt, GT teacher. Michelle Witt is the consummate professional. She's always willing to help a colleague and is steadfast in her commitment to make Metz a good place to be. During class changes, she can always be seen in the hallway moving kids, along with a positive, yet firm, presence. She's dependable, organized, and a planner who is always ready for the day's lessons. Congratulations. Thank you. We had several of our Apple Award winners who couldn't be here tonight, so I believe that is all we have for this evening. Congratulations, and thank you to all of you. And now we have our Pear Award recipients. We'll begin tonight with Baldwin Elementary School, Orlando Pizarro, head custodian. Orlando Pizarro has worked very hard to keep the Baldwin Elementary building looking brand-new. Since the school opened in late August, he has trained new employees, communicated with members of the maintenance staff, and communicated with contractors who were finishing the building. He has set up and taken down endless tables and chairs for division professional development, not to mention the day-to-day needs of running an elementary and intermediate school. All the while, he is, he was learning about his new role as head custodian. Mr. Pizarro is responsive and a dedicated team member of the Baldwin Elementary School family. From Jenny Dean Elementary School, Ms. Pearl Ellis, custodian. Jenny Dean Elementary says Pearl Ellis is the best. She's a dedicated, dependable, and hard-working employee. Her friendly smile and laugh is heartwarming. She is very pleasant and never complains. To know her is to love her, and these are their words. They mean it. She takes her job seriously and will do whatever she can for anyone. Ms. Ellis is a very valuable and loved member of the Jenny Dean family. We have from Hayden Elementary School, Becky Maroney, instructional assistant. Becky Maroney is an outstanding instructional assistant. She brings years of experience and knowledge to the classroom, which she taps into every day when coming up with new instructional ideas and activities to share when introducing and teaching curriculum. She's wonderful at communicating her concerns and is always the first to share an experience or idea that she has that would benefit others. She stays after school when needed to collaborate on student planning, and her input is always insightful and valuable. She is excellent at collecting student data, which is essential in meeting individual student needs. She's truly an asset to her cooperating teacher, to the special education department, and to Hayden Elementary School. Thank you. We have from Round Elementary School, Sean Quigley, library media specialist. Mr. Quigley is a familiar face within MCPS, but he is new to Round this year. Since day one, Mr. Quigley has been a wonderful addition to not only the school's library, but also to the staff. He's always welcoming to everyone and offers to help with whatever he can. He continues to be flexible and will drop things that he's doing to help someone when they're in need. His scope of assistance isn't limited to the library, though. He is often seen in classrooms, the cafeteria, or assisting in other areas. He just seems to know where to help. Although he is a great help to his fellow team members, Mr. Quigley keeps the students in the forefront of his mind. He is calm, understanding, intelligent, creative, organized, and much more. Congratulations, Mr. Quigley. We have from Weems Elementary School, Olympia Pineda, head custodian. Ms. Pineda is the lead custodian at Weems. She's on-call and responds promptly to everyone's needs even before she's asked. She can often be seen sweeping every leaf away from the main entrance before the buses arrive to ensure the area is presentable and that everyone is safe. The floors in the building are always spotless, bright and shiny due to her and her team's work. Whether it means crawling behind a wall of pipes to inspect a reported leak, cleaning up spills and messes with a smile, being a friendly face in the hallway for students, or sharing her amazing cooking, she helps make Weems a bright, happy place to be. From Baldwin Elementary, I mean, excuse me, Baldwin Intermediate School, we have Iliana Ruiz, the administrative associate and translator. Ms. Ruiz is no stranger to the larger Baldwin family. She worked with the elementary school until she became a part of the staff as administrative associate translator and the staff MVP for the Baldwin Intermediate family. Ms. Ruiz assists with parent letters, the school newsletter, phone calls, conferences, trainings, the Parents as Educational Partners Program for two schools, and PTO meetings. Ms. Ruiz has flourished in her new position and is the perfect fit for her school. From Mayfield Intermediate School, Josefina Panisa Barton, translator. Ms. Panisa Barton is a valued member of the Mayfield staff. She's often called upon to assist with contacting parents and does so in the most professional way. She is wonderful during parent-teacher conferences, helping both the parent and the teacher effectively communicate. Mayfield is proud to have Ms. Panisa Barton as a part of the staff, and they appreciate her very much. From Metz Middle School, Clara Espinell, Special Education Instructional Assistant. Clara Espinell makes an impact every day on her students and teachers with her dedication and patience. When there are special projects at the school, she can always be counted on to lend a hand. She is currently in charge of the childcare for the Parents and Educational Partners, or PEP, program, where she plans exciting activities for the children, like rock painting, preparing cards for their loved ones, movie nights, and many other engaging opportunities. Congratulations to you, Ms. Espinell. From Osborn High School, Keven Martinez, translator. What an awesome asset Keven Martinez has been to the Osborn main office, faculty, staff, and for the students. His outgoing, friendly, warm personality and positive attitude towards his work, coworkers, students, and parents is contagious. He loves his job and does it with passion and professionalism. As a translator, his job may be demanding at times, but he is always willing to go above and beyond to do what is needed to help anyone he can. Mr. Martinez brings his best every day and is an excellent example of providing great customer service at Osborn High School. And our final Pear Award for this evening, from Transportation, Norma Green Jr., school The transportation team says that Ms. Green is the person responsible for the countless smiles on the faces of the MCPS students that she assists in transporting to school each day. She has been a special education bus attendant for the past four years. She takes extraordinary care of her students, ensuring they are comfortable and have the necessary accessories to make their trip to and from school as safe and accommodating as possible. Ms. Green is appreciated for all she does to take care of our most precious cargo, our students. Thank you to all of you. If you can join me over here for a quick photo. I can get everybody. All right, here we go. I see everybody's smiling face. Here we go. One, two, three. Yep, one, two, three. Awesome. Thank you all. This concludes our spotlights for the evening.
Oh, we have a party?
Mm-hmm.
Are we not invited?
No.
We'll go with committee reports. Mr. Williams, do you have anything from academics? Anything from education support? Anybody? Okay. Policy, Ms. Kiefer?
No report.
Anything from finance? Do you know of anything?
No report.
Thank you. And Ms. Seber, anything from personnel?
No report.
Thank you. Before we continue, oh, wait, board member comments. All right, we'll go right to that. Don't we have? Mr. Morales, we'll start with you.
All right, thanks. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Last time I was here at the school board, around October, somewhere around there, I mentioned four students would be able to take a trip to St. Louis to attend town meeting on tomorrow. I was fortunate enough to be one of those candidates to attend, and I enjoyed every single moment of it. I was able to meet students and create friendships within four days, and it's very, it was, it was a great experience. There was a talent show going on there, so I tried to make the best of the conference itself, so I decided to perform. Of course, I didn't have any talent, but I didn't know what to perform, so I just decided to make a speech, and I decided to just talk about what makes a leader a great leader. I had help of Ms. Callahan, who's actually right here in the crowd. She actually assisted me with writing my, my small prompt, and it was great. I was able to, it was the basic idea that a great leader is someone who's able to, who's able to empower someone else just by doing something. I know I'm messing up here, but that's the big area of it. But this Saturday, there is also this, the Saturday Learning Seminar, and I advise everyone who's watching at home to attend, and yeah.
Which conference?
What was the conference at?
Oh, it was at St. Louis.
Congratulations on doing it.
Thank you.
We're very proud of you. Mr. Anderson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to start off by saying I'm looking forward to the VSBA Annual Convention tomorrow, and also I'm looking forward to fall break and working on college applications. Thanks, Mrs. Callahan. I also wanted to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. O'Hanlon?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Congratulations to all the employees honored tonight. Thank you for your wonderful service. Thank you also to all the veterans who have served, especially those working for our city schools, and a special thanks to all the veterans who visited the schools last week. Was, the kids came home talking about the wonderful drive-through at all the schools. So that, that was really wonderful. I want to take a minute to thank everyone who came out last Tuesday and voted. Looks like you're stuck with me for another year, so thank you. Today is National Young Readers' Day. Parents, please be sure to take a few minutes and read your child a story tonight. A special thanks to Hayden Elementary School, who invited me to read today. I had a wonderful time, and I, as always, I'm sure I got a lot more out of it than the kids did, so thank you for that, and have a great Thanksgiving, everyone. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Seber?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Congratulations to all our educators that were honored here this evening. Thank you. I wanted to remind everybody, or to tell you about, an event at Metz Middle School. It's called Metz Supports Puerto Rico, and the entire community is invited. It will be Monday, November 20th, from 4:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. You can go online to the Metz Middle School website to preorder a Puerto Rican dinner. There's going to be music, food, celebration, a silent auction, and for more information, you can find it online. Also, Osborn High School will be presenting Robin Hood. It starts Thursday. There'll be 7:00 p.m. performances on Thursday, Friday, and Saturday, and additional performance on Saturday at 2:00 p.m. for matinee. Tickets are $5 for students and $7 for adults, and looking forward to going to VSBA tomorrow.
Thank you, ma'am. Mrs. Williams?
I too want to say congratulations to all the Apple and Pear Award winners, all the way down to the custodians, janitors, the bus drivers. I often try and make a point to knock on a bus driver's door when I see them when we're out at athletic events, and they're just sitting in their car and waiting for, for the games to be over, and sometimes I think I scare them to death. But everybody is very, very much appreciated by all of us up here. Today is National Young Readers' Day, as Peter mentioned. I wasn't able to read to any of the students today because I had to work, but I'm sure a few more board members had that opportunity to tell their stories. Those of you who are here tonight came through the lobby and saw some of the recyclable art in the lobby. Tomorrow's National Recyclables Day. Yesterday, I attended a three-hour training session from Keep America Beautiful, and of course, I got to thinking about how can the students here in Manassas City help contribute to make and keep Manassas beautiful? So one of their initiatives that they're really trying to grow is the Adopt a Street program, or Adopt a Park program, or Adopt a Ball Field program, or Adopt a Hydrant, a fire hydrant program. So what that is, is, what I would like to do is try and get some students who are listening, parents of students who are listening, like some volunteer hours, to perhaps Adopt a Street, Adopt a Park, Adopt a Hydrant. What is a hydrant? Basically, all that is, is clearing the hydrants of snow when it snows real deep, so, so emergency vehicles can, can have easy access to those hydrants. So I thought that's something maybe I'll try to accomplish this year. And that's, that's all I have today. So thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Williams?
Thank you. Good evening. Congratulations, as I've said, to all the Apple and Pear winners. It strikes me that a lot of times these things are kind of perfunctory, and we just say, oh, let's give awards out to folks. But if we want an optimal educational experience for our children, we have to have everyone involved, help with educational experience, and we have so many folks, whether it's counselors or bus drivers or whomever, who help our kids in various ways, and we don't often acknowledge that. So I really honestly want to thank them out of my heart for everything they do, and for those folks who weren't honored tonight, thank you all for your efforts. We really appreciate it, and happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Kiefer?
Thank you. First, I just wanted to say thank you to our school board liaisons. You always just represent us so well, and I look to you as examples of leadership in my own life, so thank you. Also, congratulations to the Apple and Pear winners and everybody honored tonight. I like to say that those folks are really the backbone of this school system in so many ways. They're often behind the scenes, and we don't understand all of the good work that they do because they just, they just do, do, and continue to do. So I just really wanted to echo what everyone has said and thank them for the hard work, and I wish they were here, some of them to hear that, but from the bottom of all of our hearts, truly, thank you. Also, congratulations to Mr. O'Hanlon on his recent election win against himself, but we're happy we're stuck with you for another year, and we'll find out who those write-ins were, and we're just looking forward to going down to Williamsburg tomorrow to learn more at the Virginia School Board Association Annual Conference. Hopefully, we'll bring back some more knowledge to help us do our jobs better. And lastly, I just wanted to take a moment to, because of the spirit of Thanksgiving, just to have a moment of gratitude to everybody who makes this division work, everybody from every level to whatever you do. It all makes a big difference, and I am grateful for each and every one of you. So thank you, and happy Thanksgiving to you and yours.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Albrecht is not here this evening. He is in Williamsburg already, working on the VSBA conference. He will be installed tomorrow, Thursday, as the new VSB president for the next year, which is a lot of responsibility and a lot of time, and we appreciate everything he's doing for the city of Manassas and for the state. It's, it's a really great thing, what he's doing. I'd also like to thank Mrs. Williams. She doesn't know it yet. I mean, she knows it, but on Thursday is the VSBA delegate meeting, where we vote on everything, and one member from each school board is elected by the school board to attend that, and it's her turn. It's, it's interesting, but it's long and boring, too. So we appreciate you taking your turn. Thank you very much. And what everybody else said goes for me as well, and I hope everybody has a great Thanksgiving and gives thanks for everything that we've got. Even if you don't think you've got a lot, you do. There's always somebody else that's suffering more than we are, and so be thankful and be kind, and have a great Thanksgiving. We're now going to go to citizens' comments, and the first citizens, I'll go ahead and read this first. At this time, we welcome citizens who wish to speak about services, policies, and affairs of the city of Manassas Public Schools, because we have an agenda to Because we have an agenda to complete, we ask that comments be limited to three minutes. We appreciate the time you've taken to be here. We treat citizens' comments as a public hearing, and we do not engage in conversation with speakers. The lack of an immediate response to your comments should not be taken as a lack of interest or concern. Please be respectful when presenting your comments. I don't have anybody signed up right now, and this is citizen comments on general things you'd like to speak to. In a moment, we're going to have a public hearing on the C I P and the five-year forecast, so if anyone wants to speak about anything other than those two things, speak now. Anyone? Okay. What I just read for public, for citizen comment is the same thing for public hearing. I'm now going to open the public hearing for anyone who would like to speak about our C I P or our five-year forecast. I hope everybody's seen that, that we've been working on them at every meeting for the past 400 years or so. So is anybody like to speak to those? All right, then we will close the public hearing. We are rolling now, folks. The consent agenda, can I get a motion? Okay, Mr. Albrecht's not here, right here, right here, read that.
Mr. Chair, I move that the School Board of the city of Manassas approve the consent agenda as modified.
Motion by Mrs. Kiefer, second by Mr. Williams. Is there any discussion? All in favor? I opposed. Carry six-zero. Thank you, ma'am. We will go on to discussion agenda. C I P plan, C I P and five-year forecast, again? Let's keep this thing rolling.
You can never have too much of a good thing, right?
No, we can't. It's very good to see you, Mr. Hawkins. Thank you for being here, again.
On November the 2nd, the School Board met to review and discuss the FY '19 through '23 Capital Improvement Plan. While the School Board approves one year at a time, this document is useful, is a useful planning tool to inform the community of the planned projects for the next five years. The basis of the plan is shown on the screen, which I hope you can see it better on TV than I can see it, but it will be that we will replace Dean Ele, Dean Elementary with Dean Intermediate, and we will create a pre-K center at Baldwin. All of our elementary schools will be housed grades K through three, or two intermediate schools will house grades four through six. So also in the plan is funding for the replacement of the central office, secure vestibules for all schools, continued replacement of school buses in accordance with V D O E guidelines, school bus additions, if needed, for enrollment growth, continued upgrade of M C P S technology infrastructure to meet our teacher and student needs, funding for the modernization of our H V A C equipment at Osborne, Metz, and Round, funding for any redesign needs at Baldwin Elementary as it, as its mission changes from intermediate school to a 300-student pre-K center in 2021, hallway flooring replacement at Osborne and Metz. Some other identified needs are also is replacement of S R V, S R O vehicles at Osborne, Metz, and Mayfield, completion of parking lot replacement at Osborne, Maker Space and Cosmetology storefront at Osborne, tennis court replacement, gym locker replacement at Osborne, roof replacement at Mayfield Intermediate. The approval of the Capital Improvement Plan by the School Board will be delayed this year from December, from the December meeting until the projected date of January 23rd, so that the Finance Committee and School Board can consider a proposed energy performance contract. The investment grade audit of our facilities will be completed by November the 30th, and School Board administrative staff will be meeting with the vendor throughout the month of December, finalizing this plan for review by the Finance Committee on January the 4th. If approved by the Finance Committee, this proposal will be brought forward to the School Board at its first January meeting as a discussion agenda item, and again at the second January meeting as an action agenda item. The performance contract has the potential to redirect approximately $9.7 million of capital improvement funds and to reduce the amount of bonds issued by the city by $7,750,000. This project, at a minimum, will enhance all inside and outside lighting with LED lights and modernize all of the divisions H V A C and building automation systems, which will enhance the learning environment for our students and staff. All of this will be budget neutral. All upgrades paid for through, will be paid for through leveraging our energy savings, which are fully guaranteed and bonded. All the amounts shown in this plan were projected by industry experts or vendors as it relates to each specific project. We're excited about this C I P. Since once implemented, it will totally transform the instructional experience for our community and its students. Are there any questions regarding the C I P at this time?
Anyone? Thank you, sir. We appreciate you and your staff's work on this. I was kidding about how many times we've met, but it's been close to that. We keep changing it back and forth and, and working on it, and we appreciate where we are now. Chances are, we might change something again, but as of right now, we really appreciate all the work that's been put into this.
Thank you.
Okay, and five-year forecast?
So the five-year forecast is, is, if you, I believe you can scroll down to the bottom line, I think that's where we're looking at. You can see where our projected fund balances will be throughout the years. As we've talked about in the past, the fund balance amount in the, in the red for years '21, '22, and '23, that's not atypical for us at this point in, in this process. And it should also be noted that by state law, we cannot have those, so we will make changes between now and then to, to ensure all of that. You can see that our debt service, when you, when you go up to these lines here, you'll see where we're going up, $50 million. You know, those types of debt service is for building of the new Dean and other projects throughout, throughout the years. So that's, that's primarily the, the biggest borrowing is for, of course, the replacement of Dean Elementary School. I don't know if anybody would have any more, any questions, concerns about the five-year forecast?
Any questions on this one? Again, this, for the public to know that, again, we've been looking at this every meeting for the past couple of months, so, thank you again. Operations update. I assume that's Mr. Hawkins again.
Yes, sir. On your, on your screen is a, is the consumption of our, for our water consumption, electrical and natural gas consumption at all of our, at all of our schools. The ones highlighted in yellow are the ones of major concern to us. So we continue to report Dean Elementary is having, having utility problems, especially significantly in water consumption. We are working with Johnson Controls, our vendor that we are being partners with, who are doing investment grade audits at the schools now. They are bringing in, we have had the meters tested at least twice, so we are bringing in ground penetrating radar to be able to try to detect where the leaks are between the meter and, and the school. Hopefully, we can pinpoint where we might have a leak at, so that we will, won't have to dig up the whole line throughout the whole school. We're trying to concentrate in that, in that area. So those, those will be underway, that process will be underway very soon. The areas highlighted in blue, just, they, they look high from one year to the next, but mainly it's because summer school was held at one school one year and not at the other, and vice versa. So that's what happened, even though they didn't go down or go up to match each other, but they are very different schools. Metz is a much bigger school than, than Mayfield, so Osborne was still working with, with the Athletic Director and with the administrative staff at that school, trying to determine what's different about this year than it was last year as far as their, their water and natural gas usage. You can see that, you know, through these, that we do need to go through this investment grade audit process and to go through this energy performance contract. We have, we have, we have needs out there that we need to address in our schools. I don't know if there's any other questions about the utilities?
Any questions?
We'll go on to the stop-arm camera next one.
Okay. Again, on this, the, the fact that you guys are looking into this, we really appreciate that, these numbers, some of them are concerning to us, and they're concerning to us because they're concerning to you, and you brought them forward to us, and we appreciate that, and we expect they will get fixed somehow. Not sure how we're going to find them, but I'm sure they will be improved. Thank you, sir.
Next item is the stop-arm camera. Can you go to that one, Alba? So, so we started the stop-arm camera system, installing cameras on our school buses, on the outside of our school buses, on January the 13th of, of this year. Since that time, I know I got two different numbers there, but we've really only issued 1,151 citations, not 1,153, like it says down in the second paragraph, but we've, we issued 1,151 citations, or we didn't, the Police Department issued 1,151 citations, which is on average about 12 violations per day, and, and on average, all of our buses were passed 19 times, from January 13th through June the 30th. Of the amount, of the 1,151 citations, 827 of them have been paid. So the next, so the next one is, slide is a breakdown, month by month, so you can see the citations per day, citations per bus, and, you know, how it varied from month to month. So from July 1st through end of October, we still have, have quite a few citations being issued. Don't want you to get confused about the citations per day or citations per bus. You know, those numbers would lead you to believe that we're making progress, but we only went to school a few days in August, and, and so if you look at just September and October being two full months, you know, we were still issuing over 200, on average, about 208 citations per month, and so we still issuing quite a few. So we're not, we haven't made significant progress. If you go back and look at what, how the average is per month, from, from, we issued 192 on average per month citations from January through June, and from, from July through October, on average, about 208 citations for the months, months of September and October, if you, if you take out August out of the, out of the equation. Of that, of that amount, the School Board has received, from January through June, we received $82,700 in citations, and for July through October, it was $28,400, for a total of $111,100 in citation funds. The areas of main concern are ones that we would already know, right? I mean, where most of the traffic is in this area, Centerville Road, Grant, Sudley, Liberia Are there any questions, concerns, comments regarding the stop-arm camera system?
Mr. O'Handlon?
Just one, so the citizens, now, what's the minimum fine for passing a school bus?
So all citations are $250 apiece.
For the first offense?
And any subsequent offense. And there are no, there, but there's, it's a civil penalty, but so there's no points against your driver's license or things like that, which mean if a police officer were to see you pass a school bus, you would get, the fine would be significantly higher, and you would, you'd have to go to, in front of the judge, and it would probably be a significant number of points against your driving record as well.
Mr. Williams?
Two quick questions. First, thank you for the information. We were given a presentation by the folks who we work with on this. Did they anticipate that this would happen, or did they anticipate a decrease? Because I would assume that...
Well, they told us that it would take a couple of years before to, before it had really decreased. You know, I think in, in our area, where we have so many cars that are passing through Manassas going to other localities, it may be different from, maybe if you're in a, a more tight-knit group, where, where people are just, the same people are coming into the city every day. We have such a transient population coming in and through Manassas City, maybe that's why we haven't seen the, the decreases that we expected. I don't know.
And also, do they have any suggestions for how we could help with this issue? Because, I mean, obviously, the first priority is the safety of the kids, and...
Well, I know, we need to, we, we probably need to continue and maybe re-organize our PR campaign, let everybody know this, and, and put it out on our website, maybe send some, you know, a press release. I mean, it's a blessing and a curse in this city where we don't have an actual, you know, newspaper, and, and when we have things like this, we would like to be able to get this information out to the public, and sometimes it's hard for us in, in the city to be able to get that information out, but I'll, I'll put something together and give it to Mrs. Radford, and we'll see what we can do and work with in conjunction with the Police Department and the PR Department of the city, and maybe we can make our, our citizens more informed of what's going on.
Thank you. Anyone else? I agree with Mr. Williams a lot. So we've made $111,100, which we don't want. We want people to stop through our buses. I'm wondering, a part of that campaign, would it help to put large magnets on the back of our buses that says, "Smile, you're on cam," $250 fine for passing this bus on camera? Something along those lines, to where people can see that on all of our buses. The reason they're passing them is not because, the, the reason they're not stopping is because they just don't care, and they don't realize. So the couple of years it's going to take, where we start getting repeat offenders and they decide, "I better stop, I don't have $250 to waste." But, yeah, we've got to get it out there, and I don't know, maybe put something on the buses, maybe that wouldn't work, too. Maybe we're not allowed to, I don't know what we're allowed to do, but just a thought. Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
Proposed 2017 to 2021 balanced scorecard. Mr. Line?
Good evening, Chairman, Chairman.
Good evening.
Dr. Saunders, members of the board. Previously, you had approved our strategic plan 2017 through 2021 at the previous board meeting. The, the final step in this process is to finalize our balanced scorecard, and tonight I'll present to you the balanced scorecard, and actually, the webpage that the strategic plan is posted on, which is on your screen. This can be found under the About Us section of our website, and once you land there, you'll see the image of the cover of the strategic plan. If you click that, you can download the plan itself and view the entire document. Down below, we have some, some explanation about the plan, how it was developed, and the goals and balanced scorecard. The webpage then lists the goals, we have four major goals, and the goals are disaggregated there and left, and we'll begin by looking at Goal One. On that page, you'll see the same, this is the exact content from the document itself put on the webpage for Goal One, and down below is the balanced scorecard. The balanced scorecard is the accountability arm of the plan. It provides transparency to all our stakeholders and holds everyone accountable to achieving the vision and the goals set forth by the School Board. Under Goal One, we have three, four different dashboards. First one here are the SOL Pass rates for reading, writing, math, and science. As you roll down the page, you'll see a menu that pops up that allows us to click through the dashboards for Goal One. But before we do that, I just want to make some points here on these, on these charts. First one, looking at SOL reading pass rate, the user can hover over and see the data, which is 72% of the students on, pass the reading SOL test, and then on the chart itself, it has two target lines. On these indicators, the key performance indicators of the balanced scorecard, we have a range for SOL scores from 80 to 85 that we want to be within over the, by the end of the next four-year span. And so we, we display those targets for each of these areas. And so, we, we display those targets for each of these areas. User can slide to the next slide. History, SOL history pass rate graph is there. We do have one indicator, the English learner, students making language proficiency progress. That is a new indicator that's coming in the year. The state has changed the targets and cut scores that define what progress is for a proficiency in language score. So, that indicator does not have data this year. We'll have data for that during the summer of next year. Down below is our PALS, pass rate for K2 with a target of 85 percent, and total schools accredited. One thing I want to point out on the total schools accredited KPI, key performance indicator, you'll see I've, I've labeled the target, annual target, because our annual four-year target are the same for this measure. We want all nine schools fully, you know, accredited by the end of each year. So, you'll see, that's why I labeled that one annual target. One thing you can do too here, you'll see that you can list, you can jump to a certain dashboard in the school if you want to do that also. The next few indicators here, we have average daily attendance, chronic absenteeism. And for the indicators that may be less known to people, I add a definition there. For chronic absenteeism, it's the percentage of students missing 10 percent of the school year. So, right now, we have 15 percent, missing 10 percent or more of the year. And these charts here, just to explain to people, it may look like we're over our target line, and we are, but in this chart, we want to come down to our target line, not up beyond the target line. So, these graphs you need to look at from the reverse perspective. Same with disciplinary recidivism rate. This, this chart here conveys the number of students who have disciplinary referrals for the same offense. And again, this is a target line that we want to come down and get below over the next Then we have an indicator here, percentage of students scoring three or plus on AP exams and/or earning dual enrollment credits. So, this indicator, I want to spend a few minutes on. We took a look at the number of students earning a three or plus score under AP exams, and then we took a look at credit earned on the dual enrollment courses. We took those, that list of students, and we looked at it from an unduplicated count perspective. Many of these students who take AP exams also take dual enrollment courses. But we took and consolidated that list of students, did a unduplicated count, we only count one student one time, and we put that over our September 30th count for the high school, and it came up to 11 percent of our students have scored either three plus on AP exams and/or earned a credit in a dual enrollment course. We've discussed what a target could be for that, and over the next four years, we feel ideally, at least 50 percent of our students should have one of those credentials by the time they graduate. On-time graduation, that's the official graduation rate from the state of Virginia. Dropout rate, once again, this is one of those opposite graphs, we want to work down toward our target. And students earning at least one CT credential, that's a total count of students. 233 was the highest point we had over the last six years. We'd like to definitely get back up and beyond that over the next four years. And that is the, all of the dashboards and key performance indicators for Goal One. Goal Two, maybe, there we go. Try that again. Goal Two is cultivate a culture of excellence in service. Here, many of the indicators here come from our staff engagement survey and our, some of our counseling surveys. So, our first indicator on Dashboard One shows the percentage of employees who agreed on the staff engagement survey, that they were proud to work in Manassas City Public Schools. So, our baseline for that is 65 percent, and our target is 80 percent. One thing I forgot to mention on the Goal One, you'll see on all these, on all these indicators, there's an asterisk next to 2016, 2017. That is to indicate that this is a baseline year. That was the baseline data year that we've used to set the targets to go forward. Next one is encourages collaboration across teams. As you see, the more KPIs here, at Manassas City Public Schools encourages continuing education and professional development. Employees receive constructive feedback. These are all baseline data points that we're starting from. That was the first time that engagement survey was administered to our staff. These are retention rates. The first one is for instructional support personnel, and our, and then the second one is the teacher retention rate. This last indicator is for informational purposes only, but it does show how many of our instructional staff have advanced degrees or certifications, or percentage of them. Goal Three, forge, forge relationships to support and maximize success. First here, we have quality of external information, percentage of families and community business partners who are satisfied with quality division information. Many of these data points came from our strategic planning priority survey that we administered in February, and we'll be administering the, the same survey items again this spring. Again, this is baseline data, and you can see the scores there and our targets over the next four years. The second indicator here is the number of community business partners that work with the workforce development program, our CT programs, and currently, we have 30, and our goal over the next four years is 50. Dashboard Two, quality of internal information, percentage of employees who report being satisfied with the quality of information, and employees who feel are informed about important issues. Again, start from our employee engagement survey, and those are our baseline starting Dashboard Two, or Dashboard Three, employees fill our open lines of communication, and the, the second one is customer service. This will be a new item we'll include on our parent survey this spring, so we don't have that indicator yet, but I did put that there as a placeholder to know that indicator will be forthcoming. Goal Four. Goal Four probably had the most performance indicators of any of the goals, so I didn't use charts for this one because it would be overwhelming. I did use a table format to, to simplify the message that the dashboard conveys to our users. And as you look at the dashboard, there are four dashboards, and I labeled them by area, facilities, financial services, food services, and transportation services. And as you look down on facilities, you can see each one has the indicator, this is custodial work cost per square foot, the baseline data for 2016, 2017, and then the four-year target in the right-hand column. And as, as you roll down, you can highlight the row as, on the row that you're focused on. Go through here for financial services. I did add one column here to add the sub-area for financial services that the indicator falls under. Food services and transportation services. And that concludes the balance scorecards for each of the goals. Definitely open for questions.
Thank you, sir. Are there any questions or comments? Mr. O'Handlon?
Just one, the goal is counterintuitive, like you were saying, lower is better. Is there something that tells the user that low is better, or a little power or something?
I could certainly adds, add some wording on that, on those indicators, like the dropout rate and everything. I could add something right under the title, maybe print easy to that effect. I certainly can do that.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea.
Yeah.
Thanks for the presentation. I wanted to briefly add, those of you who can't see the presentation, a lot of work went into that, so we really appreciate your diligence and the work of the staff. I know it wasn't easy, so thank you very much.
Oh, thank you. It was a, it's been a great team effort.
That keeps me from having to say anything. Thank you very much, Mr. O'Handlon. We appreciate that.
Thank you.
Oh, you're not done?
One more thing, I just wanted to show you the final-
Don't ask for questions till you're done, because it all does confuse the chairman, all right?
I'm sorry. So, this is the final product. I forgot to show you at the beginning, so this is the cover.
Okay, so this was your fault, the reason I messed up there.
Yeah, it was my fault, completely my fault. So, that's one of the, some of here, because you haven't seen the final layout yet with the pictures. We added a lot more images. I'm working on a professional printing of this. I do have a proof of that, and we'll, you should have hard copies by the end of next week.
As Mr. Williams said, we're very proud of this, of the work you've done and the work that the school board put in on this, and, next page. Next page. I tell you what. Oops. You're not the one retiring. We were proud of it. But, but the fact that we keep doing this, that we, we keep this fresh, that you guys put so much time and effort into it and keep this fresh, I'm very proud of the, the work you've done, and everybody's done.
The committees did a great job.
Yes, they did.
Thank you.
Anything else? Wait. Okay, now you can go. Thank you, sir. OHS new course proposals. Mr. Gobalski? Ms. McMarra? I didn't know if you were going to get up with it.
Good evening, Chairman de Mary, Dr. Saunders, and members of the school board. We have two new course proposals that we'd like to put forth this evening. Go to the next slide. The first involves the Emergency Medical Technician Course. This year, we're offering EMT I. The course that we're proposing this year will be EMT II, which will allow our students, obviously, to take it for a second year. The second course that we're offering completes the four-year pathway for engineering, design, and development through the Governor's STEM Academy, and this will complete that and will allow our students to be able to receive their, the seal on their diploma. This year, because we're going to be allowed to start a year early, the juniors who are in this pathway right now, next year, if they can complete through this class, they will be able to have that seal put on their diploma. So, it completes that, that process for us. So, these are the two classes that we are, courses, rather, that we are offering. The EMT does not require any materials or equipment at, at this time, but the engineering, design, and development involves a $10,000 cost, and the cost of that involves training of the teacher and the course materials that go along with that. So, that's what we have for this evening. Do you have any questions?
Thank you, sir. I get a motion before we go to discussion.
Mr. Chair, I move that the school board of the city of Manassas approve the proposed new courses for the 2018, 2019 as presented.
Okay. Motion by Ms. Kiefer, second by Mr. Williams. Discussion. The first thing I'd like to say is that this is our second reading of this. We had this at a work session, and so, we've already had some discussion on this, that we've worked out some things. Anybody else? Any questions? Mr. Williams?
This is also-
It's not answering.
This is also brought to the academic committee, and it's a very, very helpful, robust discussion. Could you please talk about the demand you think there'll be for the class? Do you think students will be interested in taking both classes? Want to speak to that?
Sure. Thank you. The EMT class right now is fully enrolled, and by having the second course, it's going to allow the students to fulfill the sequential elective and then become completers with that. And for engineering, design, and development, the same thing, so fully enrolled right now, and with the onset of the Governor's STEM Academy and the designation, it can actually be done for those students who have fulfilled or take classes concurrently at the same time. So, we're going to be able to go ahead and get that done a year ahead of schedule, which is really nice.
Awesome.
If I could comment just a little further, one of the things we are seeing, we are getting an uptick in parent inquiries. I think I mentioned this, we've added more since the last time we've talked, where people are actually looking at our school now, and they've noticed that the, one of the reasons why they're taking a second look at Manassas is the STEM designation. So, I think the word is slowly getting out there, and, and I've received phone calls about that, and, and our students are getting more excited about it and learning more about it as we talk with them. So, we anticipate as the year moves along, increased, at least increased awareness, but hopefully, increased interest in taking these courses, so.
Thank you, Chairman. That's important, because you often hear about negative stuff, but we don't hear about the positive inquiries, and it's definitely enhancing our school system, so thank you.
Anyone else? And I'm glad there's such interest in the EMT. The older I get, the more we need. We need them everywhere. Thank you all very much. Anyone else? No? I have a motion by Ms. Kiefer, second by Mr. Williams, that the school board of the city of Manassas approve the proposed new courses for the 2018, 2019 school year as presented. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry six-zero. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Chair, I move that the school board of the city of Manassas enter closed session pursuant to exemptions from open meetings allowed by Section 2.2-3711 Part A. Paragraph one of the Code of Virginia, 1950, is amended for the following purpose: discussion of personnel matters, PERS 1718-0246 and PERS 1718-0247.
Motion by Ms. Kiefer, second by Mr. Williams, that the school board enter closed session pursuant to exemptions from open meetings allowed by Section 2.2-3711 Part A. Paragraph one of the Code of Virginia, 1950, is amended for the following purpose: discussion of personnel matter, PERS 1718-0246 and PERS 1718-0247. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry six-zero. Thank you all.